I have to find a way to get off the phone.
Your Honor.
The phone rings.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. This is December 11th, 2017. This is going to double for a couple of purposes tonight. We will be having a town budget public hearing shortly. But before we do that, we're going to have a joint meeting with our school board fellow members here. Chairman Leicas has agreed to join us here at the dais, and we're going to discuss a specific issue that's before us. And then when that's concluded, then we'll move into the budget public hearing. Apart from what was published in the documents here, if you've got the agenda, this particular topic between the town councilors and the school board members need to work out is not part of the public hearing. It should be prior to the public hearing. So having said that, if you'd all would stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for just a moment of silence to honor all those who are serving us, both locally here as first responders and abroad. Thank you. Please be seated. And let me say welcome to Chairman Leicas and his fellow school board members. We're a couple of town councilors short tonight, but we do have a quorum. So what we're going to talk about tonight is a revenue shortfall that we have inadvertently discovered. And I'm going to try to explain what happened and how this works, and I'm going to do it hopefully in layman's language so everybody can understand. I'm not going to speak like an accountant, and if I need to, I'll throw it to the town manager to follow up. So the way our tax rate works is we do an evaluation of all the taxable property in town, and we total all that up on something called the MS-1. It's a particular form that the Department of Revenue Administration, the DRA at the state mandates that we complete. And we fill in all that, all those property values, we total it up, and we send it to the state. The state looks at what the voters have authorized for their budgets, for example, for the town and for the schools, and then they do a bunch of calculations, and they decide, based on the total town valuation of property and what the budgets are, what the tax rate is going to be. So if you can follow the math, the greater the amount of town valuation, the greater the value of the property in town is, the lower the tax rate will be. So in this particular case, there was a change this year with how the state did the calculations. In this year, they used primarily electronic form to replace the old paper form, and it automatically calculates. So you plug the numbers in, and the algorithm does its calculations, and it spits out the number at the bottom. Well, what we found out after the fact, there was one particular line in this, I think it's a seven-page electronic form, that was not supposed, that should have not been included. And it was included, and therefore it gave us a lower tax rate than what we really needed for the revenue that the voters had authorized in the budgets. So what that was, that was about a $28 million line item that represents some of the early valuation associated with the TIF, or the Tax Incremental Financing District. So if you think about it, what we're trying to do, and we're planning on next year, having a lot of that value hit the tax rolls next year in anticipation of a lower tax rate, it was not pulled out. It was put in too early on this form that we filled out for the state, and by including that, it artificially lowered the tax rate to the point where we're not going to collect enough revenues with the December tax bill to fund both the town and school budgets. So we've got to make up the difference. That sounds like a bad news story. The good news is that the school and the town have an undesignated fund balance. A more layman's term is a rainy day fund that exists with both governments that helps us in times like this, in times of an emergency, in times of a revenue shortfall for some reason, an unanticipated reason like this, then we can draw upon those funds to help. One of the issues that we have is, I think, I'll use round numbers, the town budget and the school budget, they're not equal, they're different. So the town's portion of the, what the math tells us, the town's portion of the revenue shortfall is about $115,000, and the schools is about $440,000. And that's just because our budgets are different, and that's the way that math is calculated. So now, we've got to figure out, how do we fill in basically about a $600 and somewhat thousand dollar revenue shortfall? Well, we have these rainy day funds that will help us do that, so we don't have to, or we won't be looking at going back to the voters and asking for more money, a supplemental tax bill, whatever other thoughts may have been out there about how this was going to be fixed. We have the money, it's in the bank, and we just need to decide between the two boards how we execute this. So that's what the discussion is tonight. One of the issues that we're going to have to work out is the, the school has only had only been authorized by the state to have an undesignated fund balance for, I think, three or four years now, where the town's has had one for quite a number of years. So the school hasn't built up very much money in theirs yet. So we're going to try to figure out how we can do this. We understand the taxpayers, when they pay their bill, they pay it with one check, they don't pay it out of two different pockets, they pay it once. So we recognize that, and to them, it probably really doesn't matter who pays, but just that the revenue shortfall is covered, and that the two budgets have the money that the voters voted on last March. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chairman Leicas. I believe he has a, one of the school board members is not here, Steve Young, he had a statement that he wanted read into the.
He did. He had sent a statement that he wanted to read into the record. Just a few short years ago, the school district, by state law, was not allowed to have a fund balance. After much work, that changed, and the Londonary School District set out on a mission to build one up. We have managed to accumulate just over $300,000 in three years, and I would recommend that we consider using the town fund balance to support this unfortunate error, and it saw the same pair of pants. And that was from committee member Steve Young.
Okay. So with that having set the stage, Kevin, is there anything that you need to add? Anybody from the Budget Committee have anything they want to add before we get into discussion about this? All right. So I'll turn to fellow councilors or school board members, if you have any comments.
I'll throw my brief understanding about how it works. The school comes up with a budget, and the budget's approved by the voters. Now, the school does not actually collect any tax money. The town collects the tax money, and the school board or the school gives the budget to them, and over time, they're given payments. We have done this this year. We moved forward and did everything the way that it was supposed to be done. We're not pointing fingers at anybody, but I see it as we're kind of like a client of the town. We put our thing in, and the town reimburses us for it, just like police department or a fire department, with the school board. Certainly not going to say we didn't collect all the money, so got to have the fire department or the police make a little up.
So your position is you pay nothing?
Well, I think as a tax.
On the $72 million that you use of taxpayer money? So you pay nothing?
No, I'm saying merely that we get the funds that the voters approved that we would have.
So if the form worked right, your tax rate would have been higher, we would have collected the right amount of money, we wouldn't be sitting here. But your position is, you spent two-thirds of the money in the school that the town collects in taxes, yet you have no responsibility here. That's your position.
No responsibility. My responsibility is to pay all of our bills that we budgeted out, and we said we were going to pay.
You have an undesignated fund balance of $400,000. You don't want to give any of it up at all and participate in any way.
What is the council's undesignated fund balance?
We have an undesignated fund balance, it's up to $8 million, okay?
So you want to almost completely drain all of the fund balance of the school?
No, don't put a word in my mouth, that's not what I said. I said you don't want to give any of it up. You don't want to make any offer whatsoever. Your offer is zero. That's your offer, zero.
I'm actually, what I'm actually doing right now is I'm looking for the explanation on why we feel that the school needs to make the money up.
Because it's really kind of simple, right? The county, the school, and the town participate in the $600,000, right? The way the software systems work is, they didn't flag it. We're not the only town it happened to.
I understand that.
Okay? You, the school, of the $100 million approximately that we collect, use 70% of it. What I'm saying to you is, is we only owe 115 if we use the same formula. What you're saying is, no, no, no. You pay 100% because you have more money, yet technically, you have more money, one and a half times what we use in budget. I'm more than willing to pay it because we have to pay it. It's got to be paid. What I'm looking for is skinning the game from the school. Make an offer.
Can I ask what happened with the county?
We'll have to pay it. We have no choice.
So how is the school district different than the county?
The county amount is really questionable.
The county doesn't have any undesignated fund balance.
It's not about amount, how are we different than the county?
The county has no undesignated fund balance. They don't have any balance, they don't have any ability to pay.
So it is about money.
So it is about money.
So if we had no undesignated fund balance, would we be having this discussion?
Probably not.
But you do.
We do.
If some error on collecting revenues from the school had come into account, would the school be able to come in and ask, what skin does the council have in the game to help us with the revenue we didn't make?
Well, you don't collect revenue, so that's not really relevant.
That's not entirely true.
Well, that's not, if you came to the town and said, you know, we had an issue, and we had the money, I know this council member would vote to support the schools.
Where I'm struggling with is, we have things that come up as emergencies where we need to move fast. I'll give you an example. Two years ago, it was two years ago, custodians came into North School one Monday morning to find, thank goodness, before the kids started coming in, that one of the hallways was flooded out. We had a leak in the roof, it let go. Fortunately, we were able to get that cleaned up and move kids around and do everything we need to do. And we have the funds, if you will, on hand to do something like that. Now, it used to be you'd have to go ask the state for permission. Couldn't really move that fast. I do believe that in an instance like that, if we had no money and we asked you, that yes, every single one of you wouldn't even, wouldn't even miss a beat. I really feel that way, that you would most likely say, yes, let's help the schools. It's really nerve-wracking, though, to be left with a very limited amount of funds, knowing that in the middle of the night, or whenever, when there's an emergency, to secure that and to ensure the health and safety and well-being of those children immediately, it could be in question. So we have no doubt that we all work together in this town, and we all, you know, have the same goals in mind, even for our youngest tax, well, they're not taxpayers, but even for our youngest citizens. But that, depleting such an already small balance is, quite frankly, a hardship.
Oh, let me say that we, I watched your meeting on TV the last Tuesday, and so I know that you guys can't afford the 440, which is your share of the school's share of the revenue shortfall. So I think the council's certainly prepared to partner with you to make the revenue whole. I think what we're, oh, so I think what we're suggesting is some level of partnership in terms of the funding. I mean, there is a positive here in that both council and board are living with a lower tax rate than you would have had to live with if the calculation was done properly. So that's a good thing for the taxpayers. So it's not all bad news. But I guess what, I think what we were looking for is, while understanding that the school board hasn't had an undesignated fund balance very long, and you haven't really had a chance to build it up over the years, that we recognize that, and we want to try to help. I think what you're hearing, though, is that we're suggesting that we just don't pay the entire bill, that there's some level of amount contributed by both that will total up to the 640 or 650 somewhat thousand, that's for sure.
Didn't the taxpayers already pay us? Isn't that what is in the undesignated funds?
Not necessarily. In many cases, the, some of the undesignated fund balance is unanticipated revenues that we may have a banner year in tax and automobile renewals that we didn't anticipate, whatever. So in some cases, it's, in some cases, it's budget underruns, where if you have a funded position, where the person vacates the position in March, and you don't fill it till August, and you've got four or five months of pay that wasn't paid out that stays and is not expended. So there are things like that. We have various underruns throughout the budget. And, you know, and I know in some cases, what we've done in past years is, in the last quarter of the fiscal year, sometimes we put a spending freeze on to try to assure that we certainly don't overrun the budget, but try to make sure that we underrun a little bit so that incrementally, we're, year to year, year over year, trying to build a little bit in the fund balance.
If you look at the percentage, like the $8 million to what your budget, and you look at the percentage for the school fund balance versus our budget, to your point, we are in a hardship position. The schools are growing. We're going to be talking about what we do next. Do we add to move hell? Do we build another grade school? And this has implications for all the taxpayers, and it should matter to them, quite frankly, because the implication is this: we end up giving $100,000 or whatever you think we should give, and now that $300,000 that we have left over is what we have moving forward for all emergencies, or anything, you know, that moving forward. It's just, now when we go to apply for the bonds, that's what we have available. It hurts the schools, which hurts taxpayers. So I disagree with you, John. Taxpayers should, it does matter to them. It should matter to them.
And if we were to say, $200,000, we'll pay, we've given you 50% of our fund balance. And if you paid the $400,000, I don't think you guys were even 5% of your fund balance.
But don't forget, we're required to keep a certain fund balance by the state. It's not, it's not.
We have to hold catastrophic funds to fund everybody. So what we're looking for is a partnership. Make an offer.
I can't speak for the board, but I'm not prepared to make an offer this evening because this is an awful lot of information to digest, Mr. Farrell. So I have to agree with my colleague, Alitha, that when we plan our budgets, and we are not, we are required by law to go to a voter, to ask them to put any kind of money into our trust or balance. What is it called, Dan?
Undesignated fund.
Thank you. So we have to get the voters' permission to do that, whereas you all do not. So I agree with Letha. An emergency to us is a furnace that fails, a massive leak in a roof, and to, you know, to put a large amount of money into this particular situation would be, I can't, again, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I think that that would be very, very fiscally risky. So, and, you know, where's Peter? He could tell us how long it has taken us to build up this balance to where it is. And we cannot be assured that when we ask the voter to put money into this fund, that they're going to say yes. So I'm quite sure that you can understand how difficult this position is for us. So, you know, again, I have a lot of information that I have to digest, you know, we, I'm not prepared to make an offer this evening. I wasn't told I needed to make an offer this evening. I was under the impression that this was a discussion. So we're discussing. So, you know, you all have the luxury of not having to go to the voter to ask for them to fund your funds. We do. So to just take a large amount of money out of that fund, to me, represents a large risk.
Respectfully, we didn't ask you to make an offer. You made, you were going.
Excuse me. You just suggested to Mr. Leicas to make an offer.
You just said, make an offer.
So I was under the impression that we were, I beg your pardon, sir. You did ask Mr. Leicas to make you an offer.
No.
I'm not prepared to make an offer this evening.
Respectfully.
Sir.
What was said was, is that you felt we should pay. What I said was, is, no, I don't think we should. I think you should make an offer to us. That's what I said.
Well, correct. And so I'm saying I'm not prepared to make you an offer.
That's fine. When you came in and said you didn't want to pay anything.
Not me.
Well, you're a member of the board, your chairman spoke for you.
He spoke for himself, sir.
Well, that's fine.
Anyway, that's where I am. That's my position. I think that it would be very fiscally risky for us, because, again, we have no guarantee that the voter, when we ask them to put money in our funds, is going to say yes.
Let me suggest this, as one councilor, I'm not speaking for the whole council. Let me throw a number on the table. As I look at the, what, each of our, mathematically, what our share is, 115 for the council and 440 for the school board, what if, what if the council stepped up and said, we'll pay two-thirds of the shortfall, and you guys pay one-third, which I guess would be somewhere around 200,000 and a little over 200,000.
Tom, I even just we go firm that. They can pay our share, we'll pay theirs.
Okay, there's another offer. You pay 115, we pay 440.
I mean, I'd be happy to discuss it with the other council members, and Mr. Currie, to see how that would impact us.
So I guess what we're saying is, we're not asking you to pay the whole 440. We're willing to pay a lot.
We're not looking to point fingers, and we're not saying we wouldn't do anything. We just don't totally understand, like, the people said, this is the budget, this is the money you can spend, we plan to spend that money.
Would, let me ask you this, would you guys like to go caucus on this and come back in 20 minutes or so?
No. I pushed this meeting to be sooner rather than later, because I thought the discussion should start, okay? Perhaps there was a misunderstanding on my request. We were told in our meeting last week that we can wait, this has, you know, this can wait, we have time.
We need to resolve this by next spring. We have till next spring.
Yeah.
But I think, we all felt that we wanted to get it behind us.
Yeah. It's not only about getting it behind us. That is a good point. But from my perspective, as we enter our budget season, this has bearing on that significant any amount of money. So I cannot in good conscience proceed through a budget process on the school side, knowing that any amount of money can be lost on an already paltry fund, undesignated fund balance. So I felt that we need to start the conversation and move it along, and understand, and have the public understand what we're dealing, what we're all dealing with, to try to come up with some type of solution. It was not my intent to play, let's make a deal here tonight. I'm sorry if perhaps I gave you that notion. But I think knowing what we know, you understanding what we're dealing with, us understanding your side, and most importantly, that the folks out there understand that it's in all of our best interests for them. We all know this. And we all work together, we've always had a great working relationship together, and I don't see where that should change even over this.
I echo the, your thought that we need to make sure the taxpayers have confidence in the two boards, that they will not see any supplemental tax bills, that we will work it out.
Exactly.
The two boards will work it out.
Yeah.
And that, you know, we will make up the shortfall somehow between the two boards, we just don't know the details yet. So that's the message that hopefully the taxpayers will take, that they shouldn't worry that they're going to get another bill on the mail in January or something.
Yeah.
This meeting happened so quickly, though, that we don't really have any taxpayer input yet.
That's one of the reasons why I wanted the folks at home to hear us all talking about this tonight, now, you know, to, no matter how uncomfortable, we need to speak in public about it so the town knows what's going on, and we can hear what we hear and think about it some more, and so can you, and at some point, we'll come up with an equitable solution, I'm sure, or at least one that both parties can be pleased with.
Okay. We could do this again in public in sometime in the near future, or what we could do is name a couple of members from each board to go off together and work out some compromise, and then bring that, bring that to the two boards.
Okay.
I'm perfectly happy to continue to have a discussion about it.
What do you guys think?
No, I think it's fine. I mean, you know, I mean, we've kind of expressed that we're more than willing to participate more for as much as we can.
All right. So my suggestion is, if you guys agree, is we'll select two of our members, you select two of your members, it's not a quorum of each.
Yeah.
And the four folks put their heads together and come up with a solution that we all can embrace.
Good.
Very good.
That's fair.
And you and I can, I'll send you my two names, and you send me your two names, and we'll set up a meeting. How's that?
All right.
Thanks. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks to the public for accommodating this discussion.
And thank you for accommodating us up here.
And we're going to have a discussion on our budget and give some updates, and also encourage input from the public, because it will be a public hearing, as mentioned. So I need a motion to open a public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in public hearing. Kevin?
Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess while it's fresh in everyone's minds regarding the fund balance, what I want to note at the beginning of this public hearing is that we entered the budget this year with a total of $3.7 million that could be used from the fund balance. The number eight million was thrown around. It's important to note that it's actually about 8.9 million, but only 3.7 of that by our own policy can be used. So it's not actually eight, it's 3.7. The current budget that's proposed currently uses approximately a little over 3.2 million. All right? So that leaves us with $431,000 that could be used from the fund balance. I point this out because, let's say the town were to cover the complete shortfall of 610,000. Well, that leaves us in a fund balance deficit now of about $200,000 that we would have to take out of one of the proposed warrant articles, which impacts taxes. So there is a, I only point this out because I think there was a feeling this evening that, well, the town's flush with money, so it can use whatever it want. It's not going to have an impact. No, it will have an impact, one way or the other. So just want to point that out. There are five articles out of the 20 that are currently being proposed on the warrant that I want to go over this evening as discussion points. And of course, the public's welcome to comment on any of the proposed warrant articles. But the first one I want to go over are the improvements to the central fire station because this will be a bond article. There will be a hearing, a public hearing on this next Monday as well because we're required to have a public hearing on any bond issues. The cost has gone up since, since what was initially anticipated, and right now the cost stands at 5.9 million. I'd like to invite Chief O'Brien up as well as Steve Cotton, just to give a quick update on where we stand on the improvements to central fire. And then I would invite Doug Smith forward to give an update on possible financing options that we have on this.
Good evening. Thank you for having us.
Welcome.
So back last March, we, we put those funds aside for the feasibility study to, to see if the current lot was feasible to either renovate or put the additions on for this new fire station. Since then, Steve has contracted out with, so we've secured an architect, we've secured a construction management company, a civil engineering company, and numerous other engineers to go through this process to see what we have here. We found that the lot will, will suffice for what we need to do for, for the building. We hit a stumbling block probably about three weeks ago that we were concerned that the, the site wasn't going to be feasible for the drainage because where the fire station sits, it's collecting all the water from the town hall, the police station, and it's kind of flows downhill towards us. So the, the first proposed plan that they brought to us, it just wasn't going to work. It was a, it was a big retention pond on the front yard with a big fence around it that was going to be like 13 feet deep, you know? So it's like, that wasn't going to work. But since then, so I'd say the, the site work portion of this is, I think, where, where the cost increases is more significant. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think the building estimates of the 4.9 is going to be close to what, what we had anticipated for a square footage cost and everything like that. But it was the, it was the cost of the site work and the civil engineering to get to where we, where we are right now. We just had a environmental survey of the building done. They found there to be asbestos in the insulation in the block walls. So any portion of that that we're going to disturb, that's going to have to be mediated by a specialty company, you know, when they come in to do that. But that's pretty much where we stand at this point.
Correct.
Any questions I can answer from you folks?
Got questions from the council?
It was good to see that the vendor played ball.
Fire station.
I thought you were talking about site work.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, I stepped out for a second.
No problem. Yeah, this is, this is.
Well, maybe we can use the same things we've learned with that other vendor on this one.
So do we have, I have a question. We have a breakdown, I know you kind of went through it, but do we have a breakdown of how we went from 4.9 to 5.9? I mean, I know you went through the verbiage, but exactly how that happened? You know, asbestos, was asbestos $700,000?
No, no, no.
$300,000?
No, what we're finding is, like I said, the, the anticipated site work that's got to be done, done for the building to, to put it on the footprint that it's going to, it's going to be located on is where I'd say probably most of the cost is going to go to. So the swales, the drainage, the revert, rerouting water to another retention pond behind us, getting rid of the existing pond that's there is just.
I know that.
All different pieces of the puzzle that are going to take place.
We've explored trying to fix the drainage problem we have on the town common. We have found that it's very expensive. So you're probably seeing those same types.
Yeah, we looked at, looked at several proposals. We looked at the adjacent lot, Mr. Peabody's land, to see if he'd be interested in giving us an easement to put a retention pond in that. That was not, that didn't go over that way. We looked at crossing Mammoth Road and putting the water over in front of the high school, but that, that was very expensive just to go onto Mammoth Road. So this, the latest proposal that he came back with us, it, it actually worked out very well that we, they proposed, I'll have this for you next meeting, but the proposed site plan is, is a, there's a driveway that goes completely around Central Station and between the edge of the building and that driveway, the swale is in there that's going to collect all the water. But the pond out back is, is going to be filled in. Plus keeping in mind, we need to keep this thing open 24/7. So there's some added cost there. We have to keep the building occupied, functional, no downtime.
We may get some questions from, from the public.
Absolutely.
So you guys.
Yeah, we're going, we've gone into a little bit of marketing now where we've met with the construction management company that we're going to be doing some, some videotapings of the existing structure. We're going to be setting up a website that people can, you know, log into and ask questions and, you know, frequently ask questions. I'll address those in council meetings. Anything that, you know, people are more than welcome to come over to Central Fire Station to see, to see what we have there, ask any questions that they may have. And unfortunately, yes, in 1978, the building cost a little over $110,000, you know? It suited us very well for 40 years.
So if the public has questions about the fire station project, if you could just, just sit on them for a sec, I'm going to take all your questions at once and the, and the chief has promised he's going to stay because we have to answer them.
Tom, if there are no further questions from the council, I'd like to go over to Doug so he can explain the financing options.
What Jim was asking about is, is there any land towards Lafferty, you know, next to the American Legion if we could use that? I'm saying it's elevate, where, the Legion is already elevated, so that would be even harder.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Sure. Thank you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, what I've handed out for your information is a comparison of the prospective debt service schedules and the options we have relative to the length of term that we would choose to potentially finance this project. So on the left-hand side of the page is the total cost per year for, starting from the left, a 10-year bond, then a 15-year bond, and a 20-year bond. To the right of that shows each of the options, what the annual tax rate impact would be for those payments. Important to point out that from a tax rate perspective, what that number of cents per thousand represents is the increased costs versus the tax rate today. So for example, in, in year zero, we have an interest-only payment that would be due on a 10-year bond. That would impact the tax rate by two cents. If we chose a 15- or 20-year bond, it's the same in this particular case because it's an interest-only payment. As you look down the schedule, the tax impact varies based on the term that we choose. What's the biggest difference in the term? Well, of course, it's the interest cost that we pay over that timeframe. At the very bottom of the schedule, you'll notice that in a 10-year note, our total interest cost would be $814,200. If we finance over 15 years, that cost for interest only goes to one, just over 1.3 million. And for a 20-year bond, it's 1.8, almost 1.9 million dollars. So part of the decision that we would make would impact the total cost that we'll pay over time.
Now, I think this decision may be a little different than what we were looking at for communications because we were looking at length of life when we were talking about that type of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And the current Central Station is how old?
Forty years old.
Forty.
So 40 years old. So even if we did the 20-year option and looking at like what would be most palatable to the taxpayers from the standpoint of financing this building, we would still pay for it over 20 years and probably get another 40 years of life out of it. So it's very different than what we were looking at for the, for something, for technology, let's say.
Technology, right.
So really, our cost, another way to look at this is seeing, saying it actually costs us $7.7 million over, you know, for a 40-year building. Would that be, that could be a reasonable argument to make.
Sure, if that's the life estimate, sure.
And Doug, last week, we talked about an option of deferring payments until other bonds start dropping off of the current rules. Is that something that's still a potential option?
Yeah, I think the, the consideration there is from the perspective of when does the project start? And then when do we choose to reimburse ourselves essentially for those costs? We could do it, we could actually issue the debt in advance of those expenditures. It would not be my suggestion we do that, however. So the question becomes, how long can we defer issuing the debt? We're in a strong cash position, so fronting the expenditures for this project is something that potentially we could do. There are restrictions, timeframes within which we have to reimburse ourselves in order to make the debt that we would issue tax exempt. But essentially, it's minimum 18-month period. So as an example, if we were to start incurring costs on this project on July, July 1 of 2018, the chances of our issuing debt, even within fiscal year 19, are probably not very high. We would not need to do that. So the question is, how long will the project take from start to completion when we start incurring costs? And how far out can we wait to actually issue the debt?
And when does our big bond drop off? What year?
It is 2024.
And how much is that?
Principal only $680,000. So.
Is that this place?
It's the town hall, the police department, and some open space money that was risked. Combined bond issue.
And that was a 20-year bond?
Correct.
I thought there were a couple of bonds falling off in the next year or two.
The road maintenance bonds are falling off.
Also correct. So all of our, in fact, all of our road maintenance bonds will be paid by the end of fiscal year 2022. What's important to note on that, however, is the direction we've gone to date, which is as each of those bonds drops off the schedule, we're going to, yes, reduce our debt service costs, but we're going to add to the amount that would be contributed to the roadway maintenance trust fund. So from a budgetary impact standpoint, it's a wash. We're moving it to different appropriations.
And what were the open space bonds? Were they 10-year bonds?
This, the, the bonds that were issued as part of this particular, it was a combined for the police facility, town hall, and open space, and it was all 20-year term.
There were some other open space bonds, weren't there? There was a 2.7 one for the one behind Home Depot. There was, I think there was a couple of other warrants that went out.
One million dollar bonds.
One million or 1.1 million each or something? Curious if those were 10 years or 20 years?
Going to, John, I'm not sure. The only other debt that that might be part of is refunding bonds that we still have on the books. I'd have to check to see if it was part of that refunded issue. But we have no other open space bonds.
When the interest rate dropped, we refinanced those existing bonds to a lower rate.
Right, I'm just curious to see, I mean, whether they're dropping off.
You want the pedigree of where it came from?
Yeah, and if it, if they were 10 years, maybe they're dropping off. Just trying to see what the balancing is.
What I had suggested at the last meeting was that if we were to delay issuance of the debt as long as we could, we could potentially be into fiscal year 20 or 21 before we would start repaying debt, knowing that in '24, we've got an amount dropping off the schedule that even if you look at, so a 10-year bond, if we were to take the shortest term in this case for that 5.9, we'd be dropping off, dropping off from the schedule an amount that would essentially make that a wash after 2024.
Yeah, the only, you know, if I put my voter hat on, if I see a, a higher rate of increase against it versus a lower rate, understanding that the voter doesn't have, most voters don't have the ability to be able to spend the time to be able to go deeply into it, I'm just trying to figure out what's the, what's, how, how is the citizens going to view it and what do they want? I mean, and that's why I asked how long the building would be in effect. So I'm just, so if, you know, if a 40-year building costs me, if it's $7.8 million divided by 40, that building costs me $195,000 a year. I'm just trying to figure out what, what would the voter, how would the voter appreciate this? I, I'm trying to figure that out.
I think the other way to look at it too is that using the 2024, you either have, as you said, it's going to drop quite a bit in 2024. So you either have, do you want the taxpayer to look at 17 cents, 13 cents, or 11 cents, right? By that time, if you go down the list and just calculate what point you'll be at 2024, you're going to be at either 11, 13, or 17. So the point is that when you get to '24, you're going to go from 17 to zero, right? Pretty much, like you said, the 17 cents?
2024 is the last payment on the.
And that's going to cover about 15 to 17 cents?
Yeah, I was just looking to see what 680 would be. It's going to be in that ballpark.
So my point is, I guess, saying that is that I understand that no matter what you do here, the first year's going to be two, and then you're going to go up incrementally. But you're really talking only two cents between 20 and 15, and then only another three cents, four cents between 15 and 10. So I think the appetite aside, you, would you rather spend a lot of money on interest for the 20-year? And I get your point about the fact it's going to last 40 years, but at the same time, which way do you want to go? You just got to think about it that way.
That's why I'm, yeah, that's why I'm just talking it out. I don't know, I don't know the answer. Bond hearings next week, so we've got time to think about it. But it's kind of like when you, you know, people would buy their house. Some people have done 15-year mortgages, some people have done 30-year mortgages. It really, you have to figure out what your balance is against what you have going.
Comes the cash flow discussion.
Yeah. Which, you know, we can get in, you know, bond hearings next week, so.
So if I add all these up for tax impact, it looks like the difference between the 10-year and the 20-year would be, it seems like, I think, in the end, it's $81 for a $300,000 house? So it all depends on how we want to make it look for the voters on that end.
That's at the worst, the 15 cents or?
Right. Yeah. Either comparing the 10-year to the 20-year.
Okay, anything else?
All I have.
Okay, Kevin?
Nope, that's all I have on that one.
Any other, any other items of the budget that we need to come back and revisit?
Yep.
Next up is the town-wide communications upgrade. And for this one, I'd ask Mike McQuillan to come up and replace Steve Cotton.
Kevin, do you want me to hand? Kevin, do you want me to hand out the updated versions of?
Please, that'd be great. And Captain Chris Candy is going to mosey on up as well. And I believe our battalion chief and police captain come bearing good news from our friends at Motorola since we last spoke.
Yeah, it looks like you've been able to negotiate a price reduction, is that right?
Yeah, it looks like the, the, the project has come down with the pricing that they gave us. What we're doing right now is going through with our committee here and stuff, going through line by line with all the information to make sure everything that we needed in there is actually included in this, in this quote that they've given us. But it looks like there's a substantial savings that's there for the equipment, for the infrastructure, and for the subscriber network. The other thing we're working on is we're working on, oh, I'm sorry.
Was it, was it about, it was about 10%, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's great.
Yes.
Well, I, I'm, let me say in public that I appreciate the work. Vice Chairman Farrell and Councilor Butler worked together to help, to help this as well. So mostly your work. These guys don't work that hard. You guys work a lot harder than they do. But I appreciate everybody's pitching in.
Merely participating in the meeting in which we were invited to, the staff carried the ball.
So thank you to the staff for doing that. That's, that's important, important savings for the taxpayers.
You're welcome. The other, the other part of this is we're working on an RFQ for the civil work and trying to put that together in order to put out to, to break that away from this project and make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck there as well. I've been in contact with John Trotter from the Public Works Engineering Department just to take a look. A lot of the stuff that comes with the tower work and the site work, I've, I'm trying to break out of this proposal that they have, that they've given us to kind of be able to put something out so I make sure that we cover everything that's needed for those towers. And hopefully, by the end of this week, we'll have that kind of completed and be able to put that out to make sure that we're actually getting a decent price for that.
So it's possible this could even come down a little bit more depending on how the RFP, the RFQ comes back?
Yes.
Okay, we have questions from the council?
Tom, I'd also like to add, so you'll notice on here, we went from it being 2.7 million to now 2.3 with all of it covered by undesignated fund balance. Doug, could you give an update on kind of how the numbers have changed here and what's opened up?
Be happy to do that. So when Mike and Chris came to us with the revised total cost estimates, we took a number of $3 million as the new total cost of the project. We had previously set aside or removed from this project approximately $500,000, which we estimated to be funded by proceeds from the sale of our cell tower. In addition to that, we've been working with Chief Hart on a, the Police Details Special Revenue Fund, and we believe we may have up to $200,000 that we can contribute to this project from that fund as it relates to police vehicle-related expenditures for the mobile equipment. So $3 million total price tag, estimate of $500,000 from the sale of our cell tower, $200,000 from the Police Detail Fund gets us to the $2.3 million amount you see on the warrant article. And we increased from what was originally $2 million in fund balance to 2.3 to essentially make this a no-tax-impact warrant article.
Good, very good. That's what we were hoping for.
Great news.
Now, let me just state again, as I did at the outset of the, the public hearing, that leaves us with a balance of $431,087 in our fund balance. If the town's going to be on the hook for paying the entirety of the 610 shortfall, we're now, we're in a deficit of $200,000, which means we'd have to put $200,000 back on this warrant article.
So we're going to, we're going to select, I'm going to select two folks to represent us in negotiation with the school board, how we're going to do that. So what Kevin just mentioned, keep that in mind, that, that there's not a bottomless well here to draw from, that once we get past the 431, we're now starting to impact the tax, the tax impact to the taxpayers on the town side.
Do you have one other thing, Doug?
I do, Kevin. Just if we could, I'd like to talk a little bit about the prospective sale of our cell tower, because I think the council, I would appreciate guidance from the council in terms of how we might go about this. Back when we originally, this idea surfaced, it was based on a couple of things. One is, we had had some earlier offers, just kind of random offers to us, both from our current lessor of the tower and some other companies that are interested in, in buying up these type of arrangements. Recognizing that none of the revenue stream that we, is currently projected from the current lease, which goes approximately another 20 years, none of that revenue is guaranteed to us. Right now, it represents just over $30,000 annually, so less than a penny of our tax rate. And even if you assume we were to receive this 20 years down the road, it's, it escalates to around $50,000. So at that point, probably still won't be a penny on our tax rate. Understanding that that money could disappear in any 60-day notice period, the cell company can walk away from that arrangement, as could we. So there's no guarantee of that future revenue. So having been tendered these offers in the past, we decided to look at this as a potential way to fund a project, maximize the one-time revenue that we could get and, and help decrease the tax impact of this article. So six months or so ago, we had offers of $400,000, $425,000 respectively from a couple of different companies. After I had a 10-minute conversation with them and told them, well, we, we've put a $500,000 placeholder from a prospective sale of this, within an hour, I had offers back to them saying, well, if we can get the deal done today, it's $500,000. What that makes me think is that maybe it's worth even more than that. And if we were to put this on the street, if you will, and offer it up to, there are several other companies who also buy out these types of arrangements, that we could potentially recognize, receive more than $500,000. The one downside of that is the time that it would take to incur that process. And putting that in context of our, our budget calendar. So clearly, knowing how much we could get from this in the near term would be a plus because now we could say it's 500, it's 400, it's $600,000, and we now know how much of this project we're covering for certain, whereas right now, that $500,000 is a, is a placeholder. So the question would be, we potentially have two buyers that we could negotiate with unilaterally. But I've tried to be sensitive to the fact that when we were talking about this project on the cost side, you know, shopping costs and making sure we're getting the best deal, should we apply that to the revenue side and say, okay, let's put this on the street and see if we can do better? Is there a risk that in doing so, we could get less than what's been offered? Sure. But I was seeking your guidance as to if you had a particular direction you felt would be better for us to go.
Yeah, that, the $500,000 doesn't need to be in our pocketbooks right away, I guess. There's a certain time limit, so that will give you the time from when we give you that direction until the time that we would need it to be put into the system. It could be, that could be six months, I don't know, four months?
Certainly, we have time flexibility in terms of when the project would start and we would need the funding. The question becomes placing a warrant article that is going to ask the voters to approve, whether it's 2.3 million, 2.5. We just need to have some certainty on the warrant article, so knowing how much we can achieve from that sale would just give us better definition to.
I guess, what I am putting is that I'm a believer in the market and let the, let the market, if the market is potentially a little stronger than we originally anticipated, then let's let the market tell us what it's worth and maximize the amount for the taxpayers.
Well, and Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but the 2.3 is based off the premise that we will get how much for the tower sale?
500,000.
500. So say it came in at 750. Theoretically, you could apply the two, the additional 250 to the project, and then the rest would go back to our surplus. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think if we had, if the warrant article approved a certain spending level and we were able to fund that and reduce the ultimate cost, then sure.
Yeah, I would generally agree to go to the market, given the time constraints. I may take, I may take a completely different approach. I may take, I may rec, I would probably look at it and say, we should consider taking the town staff out of it, taking the council out of it, give it to the town attorney, tell him to go talk to these companies with some direction and, and see what we can, see what, see what might be able to be worked out for this. There's probably public information about what these towers sell for. We probably need to do a little homework. But I only feel that way because we're, we have, we have, we're under a calendar.
What's the rest of the council?
Kevin, when is the last day that warrant articles have to be completely submitted?
January 7.
Our second public hearing, I believe, is January 15.
What's the date for setting the?
It's January 9 or something.
It's got to be after the second public hearing, though.
No, I'm saying, I think warrants are, deadline for petition warrant articles must be received by second Tuesday in January.
So that's January 9.
January 9.
Is the deadline for petition warrant articles. January 15 is our second budget public hearing and adoption and final vote on the warrant. We have an optional meeting on Monday, the 22nd of January, if there's not full accord on that.
So the 15th is when we have to have the sale done by, correct?
Well, at least a PNS.
Agreement, PNS, right, yeah.
I mean, look at, who is, people have end-of-year money and they have beginning-of-year money if their fiscal year, if their fiscal year is calendar. I mean, it really depends on how fast we could, we could put it out there, but it's, once you commit to putting it out there, it's out there and sealed. If we follow our process, it's sealed bids.
I guess I'm a little confused with what we just said a few seconds ago. So we said we have to have a purchase and sales for the tower to know what this number is. Why don't we take this number out of the equation completely? I know, not going to like this number, to say this, but why don't we put it at 2.4, then take the tower out of the equation completely, because you know that you're at least going to get 400? That's a given, right, at the very minimum? And then it's going to buy you a lot more time. You're not going to need a purchase and sales for that, because you know that, going to the voters, you know you're going to get at least $400,000. It could be less.
But if we move out of UFB, then we have to get 60%. No.
No, unless we go for a bond.
We're still going to pay, I'm just, so we're not going to, you're going to move money out, but you're not going to bond it.
Because can't we change it at the last minute? We can zero that, that, so say, for instance, that we do 2, 2.4, 2.4, and you get $100,000 there. At the end of the day, that's going to give us a lot more time than just that PNS that has to be done by January. By the time we sit there and go through the motions and know exactly how much we got, we can reduce it, can't we?
Yeah, well, I think what he's saying is, is that some of these companies are ready to like move and, you know, and write a check now. So either, so you can either, you know, work with companies who have already shown interest and say, we can get X, all right, so we get $500,000. Let's say the market was willing to bear 750. We don't know that if we, unless we go out to bid. We may go out to bid and get less than 500. What I'm suggesting is, is that something more of a, of a hybrid of that, you know, we send our designee to go and have some conversations and see, see where we're at. If our designee could do that in the next week, we'd have an idea by, by, you know, next Monday. I don't know if he can or he can't, but, you know, or she can or can't. And the only reason I'm even bringing this up is, I'd go to the market if we weren't tied to the calendar. I mean, there's no doubt in my mind I'd go to the market.
I mean, we certainly have time if we give our agent a week or 10 days or whatever. And then if he goes, I can't tell, or there's not enough time, whatever, then we just have a, we just took a fallback to what we were going to do anyway.
What's that, when's that deliberative session?
February.
February? So that's what I'm trying to say, like, if we put that on there, we can then say, okay, give this guy a little bit more time till February, give a 60-day deadline and say, at the deliberative session, okay, we're going to change that, even, we can't change the article, but we can zero out the dollar there. And then this way, we're only going to go for 2,300. Instead of asking the taxpayers for another $100,000, at the deliberative, we can make that zero. We can change that on the deliberative because he's got more money.
Yeah, it's a reasonable point. We have a week until bond hearings. So I mean, if we want to.
I don't think we have to make the decisions.
Yeah, just throw it out there.
I think what we need to talk about is if we want to do something in the next week.
Kevin, can you get with the attorney and, and Doug and see if you can?
So is the direction?
Survey the market for, for the next week or so until we can, and get an idea if this is doable? If not, we'll have, we'll fall back to the 500K?
Yeah, but is the direction, so are you looking to go to the market and RF it or not?
I think what, I think what we're saying is, is that our preference would be always to go to open market. But if we can, over the next week, learn a little bit more about what these things are being sold for, and our agent can actually get us in that ballpark of what the market's tolerating.
Give us a probability of, you know, is it?
And if that's not the case, or we have to go to the market, possibly Joe's idea, if we can do it that way, I don't know if we can, and take the risk of changing in that deliberative session, but we're probably in a position where we need more information for next Monday. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, that works.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions on this item? The one last time I do want to have a discussion about, I have a bit of a presentation about this evening, is the recreation maintenance building. There's some questions about that at the last meeting. I've asked Art Salitis and Sid to come on in.
One, one thing about that site work for the cell towers, for anybody who's ever put a built-in swimming pool in their yard, you know, digging a hole in New Hampshire can be adventurous, so maybe we need to make sure we take, give ourselves a little, give ourselves room for.
Problem. Blasting?
So there were a few questions. One was, and before I get to Art and Sid, there was a question that was asked to Steve about if we didn't have a metal building and just built the stick building instead, what would the estimated cost of that be? Steve came up with a number of around 120. Steve, did you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
No, it was basically the same configuration, other than it's, it's, it's stick-built versus metal.
But that includes heat and?
And all the protection.
Okay.
Smoke detectors, exit lights, that kind of stuff. So it was just a different type of construction. Usually, metal's about 20, 15 to 20% more.
Okay.
What's the, can I ask a quick question on that? What's the life, I guess, the, is metal's going to last longer? Is that, is that kind of what the thought is? What's the life expectancy for that?
I was looking at more of a 40-year building without any maintenance. You can see now we're going to use vinyl siding, now we're going to use shingles. You know, it's two different type of constructions. That was the theory by going with the metal, just low maintenance and.
So probably lower additional, lower initial cost, but higher annual maintenance.
Right, that's the point.
So Art and Sid, there's been some discussion about what's taking place in this building, what's being stored in the building, where's the current storage? If you can help fill in the gaps here, that'd be very helpful.
Right now, our, our stuff is stored in metal containing, containers. So I thought of this a couple of years ago. I went down to, down at West Road, and Sid had to get a piece of equipment out, and he had to move six pieces of equipment to get to the one. And it was like walking over an obstacle course. And the build, the, the metal containers, they don't have a life expectancy of 40, so moisture gets in and there's problems with it. We have no place to do maintenance. My thoughts were, as the department grows, long after I have retired, they're going to need a bigger place to store stuff, trucks, front-end tractor, whatever. And right now, we've been doing it catch-as-catch-can. And I, part of this is, for me, it's safety, because I've, we have one part-time maintenance worker that's Sid, and he spends time moving stuff in and out to get to one thing, and then he's got to put it all back. It's like, it's like, kind of like a jigsaw puzzle where it only fits there. And there's no real place to do, to do maintenance. We had a problem with the mower and luckily, the, the guy that we used came down and we ended up looking at it outside. Now, if it were raining that day, what do we do then? So. I think it's just long overdue. Also, we don't have any storage for our summer recreation program stuff. Right now, it's stored under the high school, in the sandy portion of the high school. We used to have a storage space way back in the old town hall, and we lost that. Got stored in my basement for a while and then, and wife wasn't happy with that, so it went to the downstairs at the high school. So we just don't have any place to put our, our stuff.
Alright, so I've got a few. Help me on, just help, help walk me through this, okay? So, 1,600 square feet. How many pieces of equipment do we have? I mean, I'm just having a hard time understanding what we have and what we don't have. Art, just cause I haven't seen it.
Well, this is, I talked to people before we came up with this, and everybody said, you know, don't, if you go too small and then go back again because you don't have enough room, you're gonna look real foolish. And I remember back a long time ago, we were asked as taxpayers to put on a school addition, then a year or two later, they came back to us and said, oops, we need more room. So my thoughts are, I'm, I'm not building for what we need right now, but what's gonna be in the future. It just doesn't seem to make sense to build a smaller building and then, as the department grows in 10 or 15 years, to say, oops, we need another building. Well, we just built one. You know, that's, you know, could we get a, could we live with a smaller building? Absolutely, but in 10 years, will the people be able to live with a smaller building? That I don't know.
Neither do I. That's why I'm trying to visualize it.
Yeah.
So just so I can get some sort of an idea.
So we have, we have a, well, Sid can give you the equipment, we have better than I.
Thanks, Sid.
Right off the bat, we have four metal trailers and we have a small building, a 12-by-30 building out there that we've, that we built through volunteer, or through contributions from the rec, or the, the two soccer organizations. If we were to put all of our equipment into a building, and there are about just over 1,000 square feet of, of, of stuff we have. If we, if we were to put the trailer, which, which is stored at my house, and get that out of my driveway, we'd be up around almost 1,100 square feet.
Okay.
We have a lot of equipment. We have, I can give you a quick idea. We have a couple of commercial mowers, a tractor, a utility cart. We have an aerator, we have a verticutter, we have, then we have a lot of walk-behind items. We have a, a, a tank sprayer for spraying the fields. We have a, a wheeled blower, we have a walk-behind aerator, a walk-behind overseeder. Trying to think what else. Generator. That's probably about three-quarters of what we got.
So with all that equipment, Sid, what, what fields do we service with these?
All rec fields.
So LAFPA?
We, with, with some of our equipment, we work with LAFPA. LAFPA has a John Deere utility cart, which we hired somebody this summer, John Dalrimple, to help us out. He, he uses there, over there. I've always used my Bobcat, my utility cart on the fields, but he's been using that. But when we work on the fields, we have to transport our stuff from West Road over there. And we also do West Road.
And West Road, what are the field, are there any of the fields behind, are any of the fields behind the schools' rec fields? Do we do anything with any of those?
When they're playing on Matthew Thornton, and we also take care of the, the girls' high school field because of, because of the women's league.
We, our recreation groups utilize school fields, softball fields, so we-
Try and get an idea.
Yeah, so like, they use, the women's group will use Matthew Thornton field, the women's group will also use the high school field.
Yep.
So we tend to help with that, taking care of those.
So we're probably servicing a dozen fields?
Yeah, if, if you count, if you count LAFPA, there's a lot more, but the rec, actual rec fields, there's seven,
Eight.
Eight, nine, 10, probably 10 fields.
Okay. So we'll call it a dozen, cause you help at LAFPA too?
Yes.
Okay. At least I, at least I now have a little bit of an idea of what we're doing.
Joe, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I've seen the, the housing units, not at your house, but the other, the other units.
Yeah.
Been around there a while, and they're in deplorable condition. I don't even know how you work with it. And hats off to you that you've done it for this many years and not screamed even louder. So, my question would be is, are you, would you be okay with the wood versus the, the metal? Do you see anything that's gonna be a negative, big negative, besides the longer?
Sid and I were talking about that and both of us, being in AARP, when there's a problem, we're not gonna be around. So, yeah, it's fine with me.
Cause you're gonna-
I'm not gonna be here. I'll probably still be paying taxes.
Some of us are homeowners as well, and so we know with siding on it, windows and everything.
Yeah.
Helps a lot. It's not maybe a metal container, but certainly it would help a lot, so.
Absolutely, and, and again, I think if this building will, I say I don't care, but you know, I mean, this is a bill, we, we haven't had anything. We're getting along, but in the future, we're not gonna be able to. And it, in, as the department grows, I want the, the new people to have a place to go. We don't have a, any place to put it. Sid used to keep the chemicals that he would, you know, certain chemicals in his, in his house until his wife caught wind of that, and then we had to get them out of there, so, you know, it's been kinda catch-as-catch-can. And what, it's just, I think it's time.
And some of those chemicals, like, very flammable, combustible?
Well.
That was gonna be one of my points. What if, what if there is a fire? Wouldn't the steel building survive a lot better than the wood?
Yes.
Yes.
I think if one of the pieces of equipment catches on fire and something else catches on fire, it's not gonna matter what the structure's made out of. It's gonna just, it's gonna be gone anyway, but.
And here's another question. Where exactly will it be built? When we do build it?
Um, down at West Road, the second set of fields, as you get off of Wiley Hill, there's a pavilion and there's a bunch, there's our containers. It can go there.
Okay.
It's fairly flat land and it's visible from the road.
Now, I'm just thinking worst-case scenario, whether it being kids goofing off, either driving into it, a steel building would survive a lot better as well as potentially in the future, someone may not, knowing how to operate equipment, the steel building would survive a lot better if they drove into it by accident.
It would depend on whether they put knee walls in there, and there might be concrete walls that are up, be higher than a vehicle.
For the, for the wood one, for the stick building?
I, I, I don't know. I would, no, there wouldn't be.
The wood was conventional garage-style. Yeah, there was no-
No protection, if someone drove into that.
You know, typical garage that you would have at your house.
On a slab, no four-foot frost walls or anything like that?
No, no, there would be four-foot frost walls, regular fountain sub, concrete slab. That would all be done to grade and frost-free, insulated. What they're saying is, the first two or three feet, where in a steel building, you probably have concrete. This will be a conventional two-by-six construction, just like you would have in typical garage at your house.
Alright guys, let's, let's try to wrap on this.
And Sid, just one other question. If you were to, if you were to have this building, what would your maintenance season be?
Well, would pretty much be the same. I mean, unless, unless the budget increased, I, I usually work from March till December. I've done it in December.
So, I just want everyone to understand that, that that's the reason for the heat in the building.
Yes, yes, and we have the chemicals, the herbicides and the fungicides, they have to be, they can't freeze. And some of our gauges on, on our pumps are all liquid, so they have to be kept warm, just over freezing, it's about 40 degrees.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Any questions from the Budget Committee on this topic? Alright.
Kevin? Tom, one last thing I just wanna mention before you move it over to the public is the Mack family homestead. There's going to be a inspection done, soup to nuts, this Thursday. So I will have an update for the council on that at next Monday's budget workshop.
Perfect, thank you.
If I could ask sometime, if we do decide to carry this through on a bond, I would ask that respectfully to the, to the Mack family, that before we, at least before I vote on it, I'd like to see what I'm voting on, so we can start, cause we need to-
Take a tour?
Well, if they wouldn't mind just, just kinda taking a peek and, you know, and so that we could start thinking about what we would use it for if the voters decided to approve it.
Can we get that as a, as a placeholder on, on this? Isn't, is it on, I don't see it on here. Am I not looking at the right spot? Item number 20.
Oh yeah, number 20. Yeah, on the other one, the articles, just add number 20 on there as well.
Well, yeah, the difference there, Tom, is that when that, when the publication was placed in the paper, this wasn't yet added to the warrant, so.
Yeah, I understand. I just, just for next Monday, I mean. Alright, unless there's objection, I'm gonna invite the public for a public comment. Okay, so I'm gonna open it up to the public. I'd ask you to come forward, state your name and address. And I have a stopwatch. I'm gonna allocate you three minutes, and if you need to go longer, just let me know and we'll certainly consider it.
You guys have two hours. Martin Strugus, 17 Wimbledon Drive. First, a comment about the paying of the missing deficit in the taxes. The school can afford a 1% cut right now and not skip a beat. Don't listen to the sob story that they're giving you about that they can't pay their part of this, because I don't buy it for a minute. They're the biggest spenders. They spend two of every three dollars in town. They can well afford it. Their bottom-line budget. If anything happened, they would scramble around at the other budget items and pay for it, so I don't buy the argument. But anyway, getting back to my main point, what happened to my million-dollar refund? You know, we started out back in October, the taxpayer was gonna get a million-dollar refund.
What it's gonna turn out to be, is we voted, we voted 500,000 to begin the process that hit the tax rate, the December tax rate, because of the mistake with the-
Yeah, I understand all that.
It, it turns out to be about 1.1 million-dollar refund to the taxpayers.
1. what?
1.1 million. The 500,000 we did originally, plus this 600,000 that we did not collect, which is actually a benefit to the taxpayers. So total, between the two, it turns out to be a 1.1 million.
So the 1.1 million will go to the tax rate?
Right, it went to the tax rate.
Okay, cause the way the paper had it and other stories, it sounded like it disappeared within 30 minutes.
No, no.
Okay, alright, so that's number one. Second thing, in going through the line items, they're not very detailed. What did you budget for CART this year? Now, I'm not speaking as representative of CART, but as a taxpayer. Did you fully fund that?
Doug, do you have that number?
Uh, we can, we'll find it for you, but it's at the same level as it was in 2017.
They weren't cut.
Okay. Now, what about the supplemental senior transport? Since July of this year, we've had only one person transported for $36,000.
Yeah, we're, we're still collecting data and, and working with, with a cab company and doing some experiments. I don't think, Lisa, we have a full report out yet, but we're still collecting data.
Well, I think the evidence by now is, it wasn't needed, and my suggestion is, is to take 10,000 and give it to CART to expand their services in London Dairy for longer hours, either early in the morning or late in the afternoon, and give the rest back to the taxpayer. There was another Article 16 for $100,000 for commercial industrial revaluation. Can't our assessor do that?
Martin, if he wants, he can speak to it, but I can tell you, we've always contracted with this in the past because it's specialized valuation. And chances are, if, if our assessor did it versus a, an actual commercial appraiser, one, we're going, going to get better values and therefore less abatements on those values.
Okay, so this is SOP, Standard Operating Process?
Correct.
Okay.
And also Marty, I think we anticipate, we would, if we did that, we would have to hire part-time help into the, into that department. And it, it would burn up.
Yeah, that's fine.
Pretty quickly.
Article 17, air and water quality study. Does that, is that for the whole town or for the shack next door?
That's town-wide.
Okay, well, that's what they call it, so I just wanna know. Okay. Article 18 has sidewalk improvement, and what is that?
That's, that's the sidewalk that's by the kindergarten, to extend it to its original length down to, down to the, past the bridge.
To the next road, okay. Alright, thank you. And then Article 19, you have Sergeant Road purchase. Where's that piece of land?
That's, that's the, that's the land right next to the American Legion. They've offered that land that they currently own to the town.
For around the corner?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Any purpose for that?
Uh, we're, we're not sure yet. One of the things that we've kicked around is perhaps additional parking for, for the recreational fields. But that's something that, that the town manager will have to recommend to the council and make us make a decision. We haven't decided.
Okay. On the cell tower issue, is that revenue positive or revenue negative?
It's, it has the potential, Marty, to be revenue positive, and the reason I say that is because the state right now is, it's, has this group called FirstNet. There's been a lot of news lately about it, where they're building towers all around the state to upgrade their communication system, and it's, and it's not exactly like what we're doing, but there could be some piggybacking there. The issue is, it, nobody knows when the state is actually gonna start constructing these towers. I'd love to say, let's wait for them to do it and we'll piggyback off theirs, but it could be years down the road. However, once we construct ours, there's definitely possibility there for them to put their equipment on our towers and get the revenue from the leases that the state would be doing with us. Do I have that right, Mike?
Marty, we're at five and a half minutes, but I'll extend you if you wanna keep going.
Alright, thank you. No, I was just gonna say, if it's revenue positive, why aren't we in such a rush to get rid of it? As, as the, as he said, you already got a, they offered seven something, 400 and something, and the minute you said, you know, well, if, if we can do a cash right now, they, they went up to 500,000. So that tells me it's a value, valuable piece of land and it's generating revenue for the town, so why get rid of it so fast?
Yeah, I, I see what you're, I, I was confused. I wasn't sure. So you were talking about those towers?
Yeah.
It is, right now, it is revenue positive. It gets about $30,000 a year, so it's, it's less than a cent on the tax rate that we get out of it. And the point Doug was making is, they can terminate it at any time, even though the contract is long-term, they can terminate it within 60 days. And we were looking at it as a mechanism to get the shore cash now and offset, you know, $500,000 that would go toward paying for the portable radios as part of this communications upgrade.
Okay. And my last question is, on the airport police detail, does that automatically go up every year? That they reimburse us for all the police officers that go up there?
They reimburse us plus 10%.
Okay, so it does go up, okay. And, oh, I'm sorry, the la, and the last statement I have is, I think to try to rehab central fire station is a mistake. It served its useful life. The equipment nowadays is much bigger, wider. I mean, I used to be able to look into the fire truck and see the dashboard and the seats. Now we need a step ladder to get up and look at it. I walk by there when I do the oil recycling and the tanker truck, I mean, it, it almost touches the ceiling. So I think it's time, like we, we reached many years ago with the police station and the town offices that said, enough is enough. And I think to open up the can of worms with possible asbestos in the, in the cinder blocks everywhere else, I think it's crazy. To spend that kinda money, you know, and you know me, I'm not a big spender. I support a new fire station. I, I think it's crazy to try to rehab this one and spend all that kinda money. And I think, you know, if we decide to go with a new station, that can go to the alert people, and it's a win-win situation for the town. I mean, somewhere along the way, with the population increasing, the airport issue, we're gonna need a modern fire station with proper training facilities and all that stuff, and I think it's time to bite the bullet. Make it go out 20, 25 years, whatever you want the bond to go, but I think it's needed to keep, you know, I don't think it's worth rehabbing at this point, and I thank you for the time.
Alright, I think you won a free pizza.
Can I just make a comment of, that he just made? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
So I think that's, that's a great point, because I know that, I don't have the paperwork with me. I know that the, to, we asked the question, how much would it be to rehab this station versus just lava- this station versus just level it and make a whole new station? I think now that it's creeped up this, this high, I think it's really close to the brand-new station now. So, I don't know.
Steve, what was that cost?
Without land, if we could find land, in the area that we need the station to be, minus that, that's one of the biggest problems, trying to find a piece of land that is where we need it, away from station two, not too close to station one. You just can't pluck a piece of, piece of land. We need the land. That's the key thing. We don't have the piece of land. Let's say we did. So, minus the land cost, a new station, you can add at least one-point-two million top of renovation.
Because we just added one point, we added one, one million.
So, seven-point-one million, plus the cost of land.
Oh, you're talking, okay. But can I just rewind for a second? So, we were one-point-two at four-point-nine. So, I'm still saying we're at, right?
No, no, no.
No, it's one-point-two on top of five.
Okay, okay. So, last week, that you're telling me that would have been two-point-two then? Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah.
Okay. Because, all right, these numbers are kinda, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mary Wingsores, Tugail Road. I just wondered if, what the, if there's a policy or if it's an ordinance or if it's a statute that governs the undesignated fund balance?
Yes, there is. There's a, there is a, a policy and there's also state guidelines that tells us how much we're supposed to have.
So, do you guys know the state numbers? You know, like the guideline number that I could look it up? Or the policy number that the town adopted or whatever?
I can send you the, it's on the website. I can send you the link.
Okay, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Because I was looking through the link and, I mean, the website, and it's not, like, obvious where it is.
Sure.
And I just wanna say thank you to Marty, because I think he, you know, is keeping all of us honest and coming in here with all these questions. And that's terrific. You know, I appreciate that he does that. However, I do disagree with him about y'all picking up the bill, because it was a town, you are the, you are the collector of the funds. And it was an error on your part and you should make them whole. You have the funds to do it. So-
Well, just to be clear, the, the error was part of the DRA algorithm formula that they, they had us fill in for them.
I understand. But it's, but the bottom line, the buck start stops at the collector of the, of the funds.
A, a realization that several towns had the same problem. So, we, it's unlikely that we all would have made the same mistake. The, for the problem is with the form. And it's our understanding that DRA is gonna consider fixing that for next year. So, it won't happen. We certainly will be cognizant to watch for it. But it's not something that was, that wasn't a careless mistake. It was a systemic problem with the algorithm in the, in the online form.
Regardless of how it happened, the town is the collector of the funds and had the responsibility to collect the correct amount of funds. And if you didn't, then I believe the town should make up the shortfall. As it was said before, it's one pocket. It's one pair of pants. Okay? So, thank you.
Okay, next. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no other public comment. Kevin, is there anything else we need to talk about for the budget until next week?
I do not have anything else.
Counsel, you have anything? Budget Committee, do you have any comments or anything you wanna make? We're anticipating the Budget Committee's gonna discuss next week some of the contributions to the charitable organizations that support us.
I did wanna bring up one other thing about that. Not that particular, but a subject. One of the things we noticed this year and last year and stuff, since, since we have changed the, um, the pattern, which way we do this, where no matter if you get a donation from the town or not, you're still gotta come back up and present your case each year for why you want funding from the town. The problem we have is, there are no specific rules. In other words, why do we give one organization, I'll make up numbers so I don't single anybody out. Why do we give one organization twenty-five thousand and why we give another one five hundred? You know, is it based on the number of Londonderry residents they help? Is it based on the amount of money they spend on the Londonderry residents? You know, we don't have any rules. There's no specifics. So, what happens if we see one that's getting fifty thousand and we're like, you know what, they used to help about five hundred people. Now, they help about ten. So, we're gonna drop that. But if we do that, we have to have some reasons to kinda justify why we're doing it. Otherwise, it just looks like, well, what's, what's your justification? You know, so, we don't really have any specific rules on why we give what we give.
So, to the counsel, what I, I, I talked to Tim before the meeting about this. And what, what I suggest, suggested to Tim, and if with you are okay, that, that we delegate to the Budget Committee, at least to come forth with a, with a plan of suggested guidelines, what they ought to be when they, when we decide what these amounts are gonna be. And so, we'd ask the Budget Committee to bring forth to us some guidelines for us to ratify.
My understanding was, is it was being done based on contribution to the community.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah.
And so, I mean, so if something happened like what he said, that's justification.
But do we have-
But there are no, there are no documented guidelines. He's coming up with a document of, you know, here's, here's what the Budget Committee should use as guidelines to consider the, the proposals from these organizations.
To give you an example, we looked at this year. And we just kinda, the last couple of years, been saying, how many residents do you help? What's the dollar value in what you help for the residents? One of them might help ten residents and spend two hundred thousand. One may help five hundred residents and spend a hundred thousand. So, you know, there's a lot of things.
Yeah, I, I would say that when, when, back when, when the council was doing what, the work you're doing right now, it wasn't written. But we started to evolve to say, gee, tell us what you do for the community. We had, we had some organizations we were contributing to that were out on the seacoast, that really weren't doing anything for Londonderry. And we kinda rethought that. Said, gee, we'd rather focus money going to organizations that help Londonderry. But that, again, it's not documented. It's just, gee, we thought that was a good idea.
I think it'll be good to have it in place for future Budget Committees and future council to actually have a document placed upon how we designate them.
I think it would be good to be in writing, too. But I think that Chairman Dolan was right, that when we used to do it here, there was some criteria that they would bring to us. It would be, like you said, it's, it would be like a report. This is how many people we, we, and-
They did receive that.
I, I remember doodling it.
A lot of them do that. A lot of them tell us that.
And, and, and just like you said, oh, that's, that's fifty, fifty dollars a person or a hundred dollars a person. You know what I mean? And what it calculates out to be.
So, Tim, thank you for offering to do that. And, and we'll, we'll certainly be, we'll eagerly anticipate your suggestions.
The reason I brought that was, because if you look at those numbers with what we give to them.
Right.
They don't balance. They're way out of whack. And I didn't wanna make any drastic changes. So, that's why I said we need to kinda do something for maybe next year.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
There's actually something in the municipal code, which hasn't been updated since two thousand and three. And it was called the Community Service Grant Program. Maybe we should go back and see what that document is. Probably needs to be updated. But at least that they don't have to recreate the wheel. They can start from somewhere.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Because that's, it's, you know, because it says we're gonna give seventy-five thousand dollars of the town's operating budget. I mean, some taxpayers have come up to me and said, well, why are we giving anything? I mean, people ask questions, right? But maybe, since it's in bold letters, Community Service Grant Program, something must have been asked.
Just in general, that's a good question. I've, I've been asked that, too. Just in general, for us to, to provide those services, just to hire staff and to train the people, give them office space here, conference room space, all that stuff, it costs us a lot less to use professional organizations to provide those services. So, that's generally the reason.
And even they've been asking, too, you know, what the criteria is. So, I didn't have a list. So, that's why I figured I better bring it up.
Well, maybe there's a document here somewhere.
Perhaps. All we need to do is make an amendment to it.
Well, I think, I think all you would be doing is making an amendment to the municipal code where this section is in the finance policy. But to John's point, there may be, there, there should be a resolution that went along with this when it was first created that maybe outlined some more detail as to what the criteria was supposed to be.
Oh, we'll look and see what we can find on it.
Yeah.
Good.
Check with some of the other towns, too.
Thank, thank you to, thank you, Tim. And thank you to the Budget Committee for offering to do that work. Okay, seeing nothing further, I'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.